Greg, would you perform a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Spread?
Present.
Phillips?
Present.
Bynum?
Present.
Shahadeh?
Present.
Natfig?
Fitzgerald?
Present.
And Lorette?
Present.
Six present, one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, Greg. At this time, folks, we will enjoy a presentation by the public financial management on debt service and combined sewer overflow. Greg, you have the floor.
Thank you. Enjoy is not usually a word I've heard associated with this presentation. But I'd like to introduce Jenny Blankenship with PFM and thank her for coming all the way from Des Moines today, but I think she had a stopover in Washington?
Yep.
Was it? So, thank her for coming today. Our goal tonight is to review bonded indebtedness and geo-capacity and also to take a look at our long-term financial plan to fund or pay for the CSO, Combined Sewer Overflow, program. You know, it's a long-term program. It's 2024 right now. We're looking to extend that to 20...excuse me, it's 2020 right now. We're looking to extend that to 2024 and we're looking to come up with a long-term financial plan to pay for that. Local option sales tax has paid for our CSO, our sewer separation to date, but it's not going to cover the entire remaining $50 million, plus or minus, over the next several years. So, we've come up with a tentative plan, one that's flexible and can be adjusted as other sources become available, or if not, we've got a tentative plan here going forward. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jenny to...maybe you could take two seconds and just introduce PFM in general?
Sure.
And then we can dive into the program.
All right. Well, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight to show you kind of some of the models that PFM does. PFM is a financial advisory firm in the state of Iowa as well as throughout the United States. And what we do is we work very closely...we like to consider ourselves an extension of staff to work closely and develop models for all different types of financial planning, whether it be your debt service fund, which I'm going to talk about. We work with sewer funds, water, electric, and we really just try to build planning models so that at any given time, the city can see at a glance where they stand. And we do work with all kinds of cities throughout the state of Iowa, as well as I personally work with some clients in Nebraska, as well as Minnesota. And we only work with local governments, so counties, cities, school districts, as well as the state of Iowa. So, at any time, I'd like this to be very informal, as we're going through this, there's going to be a lot of numbers, a lot of spreadsheets. Please feel free to stop me at any time and ask questions because these models are definitely something for you guys to be able to utilize and, you know, make sure that you understand where I'm coming from, and if not, please ask questions. So, what I would like to start with today is I put in front of you guys, everyone has a booklet, and if you go behind tab one, where we're going to start off today is talking about your debt service fund. And as you know, your debt service fund is a fund specifically set aside to where you guys pay your general obligation debt out of, okay? Essentially, this is a WASH fund, so money comes into it to pay your debt. As the debt is retired, it goes back to zero or very close to it. It's not one of those funds where you try to build up cash. And what we're going to talk about today is some future bond issues that are out there that are proposed, that may come up for projects that we'll discuss in a little bit. And so, what I'd like to do is just go ahead and kind of explain my model here. The model that I'm looking at right now is Exhibit One. Up in the upper left-hand corner, it says Financial Planning for Capital Projects. Underneath that, it says Projection of Tax Levees and the Tax Rate Impact, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And what I have done here is I've put together a model. Off to the left-hand side, you can see that I've built in the taxable valuation, not only for the fiscal year that we're just starting the budget for now, FY13, but I've also given you three years of historical data, so you can see where the city has been historically. And you can see that we had about almost a 3% increase in our taxable valuation this year, so we're at about 800...almost $805 million. With that, based off of the amount of abatements that we have coming in, and an abatement is something that will be used, a type of revenue source that will be used to offset the debt payment, we have those as a revenue stream coming in, and then the rest of it will need to be levied. And the debt service levy is a part of your total tax rate. So, when I'm talking about the rates here today, it's just one piece of your total...of the city's total tax rate. So, if you look at this, you can see that about right in the middle, it says Total Outstanding Bonds. And this is the current general obligation debt that the city has previously issued for projects throughout the city. And currently, in FY13, the total debt service that you will need to be paying is about $2.6 million. And you can see how that debt service payment changes over time. What we have done here is we've actually built in the proposed bond issue for 2012, and this is going to be about right now, based off the projects that we're estimating for this, and the projects are on the last page of the same tab. And I believe that these are all projects that you're familiar with. Is that right? These have all been discussed? And so, you can see here that this is going to be about a $4.4 million bond issue. What we tried to do is, in order to have the least amount of impact to the debt service fund and to the total tax rate, what we tried to do is actually, in the first year, and now I'm looking at the yellow highlighted section that says Proposed Series 2012, does everybody see that FY13 payment of $158,436 back on Exhibit One? Essentially, what we did is, when we structured these bonds, we're assuming that no principal is going to get paid, that's strictly just the interest payment. And why we structured that that way is so that we have the least amount of impact. You can see there, if you go back to the left-hand side, that the current tax rate, which is the fifth column in, you can see that even by paying just interest only on this bond issue, we're looking at a slight increase of about 5.2 cents in order to pay for that 2012 bond issue. And then we've also built in a proposed 2014 bond issue. And the reason why we are just dealing with these two bond issues at this point in time is because they're projects that I believe the 2014 certain phases have already started on that. Is that right? Okay. So, that's why we wanted to build that in here. And what we did when we were structuring the 2014 bonds, and obviously, this is all preliminary right now, but you can see when you're looking at those, that we actually are only doing interest or small principal payments in the first two years of that bond issue as well. Over time, your general obligation debt that's currently outstanding will be paid off, and so that current outstanding debt is going to decrease over time, and you can see that happening. So, what we tried to do is push back some of the payments a little bit so we can wrap around the debt that's currently outstanding. And you can see the effect off to the left-hand side, in that fifth row from the left, how it's...there's going to be possibly a slight increase to the debt service levy. And keep in mind that we are assuming that taxable valuation will grow at 2%. However, if that valuation growth comes in higher, that's obviously going to decrease the amount of these increases for this debt, okay? Is there any questions on this, I guess, before I go to the next tab, or where we got our numbers, projects, anything like that? Okay. Well, if there's no questions, I guess, on the debt service fund, then I want to talk to the next tab, which is Tab Four. I'm sorry. Exhibit Four in the same tab that we're in. And what this is, is this is actually a spreadsheet that tracks your general obligation debt capacity. And as you all know, the state of Iowa has a law that states that at any given time, a city cannot issue more than 5% of your total 100% assessed valuation, okay? So, 5% of your assessed valuation versus on the spreadsheet we were just looking at, we were looking at taxable valuation, all right? So, this is 100%. And our limit, what I'll refer to as our geo-limit, the legal limit that you can borrow is 5%. It is my understanding that the city actually has a policy that states, of that 5% that we can legally sell, we're only going to sell 60% of it. So, we're only going to go up to 60% of that legal limit, okay? And from the cities that I work with, I have seen that that is the, I would say, the most conservative estimate that I've seen out there. Oftentimes, I see that effective limit, I'll call it, at 70%. And the reason why I see that limit sometimes higher is because as...when you're looking at what goes against your geo-capacity, it includes all general obligation debt that you have outstanding, but it also includes any rebate agreements that the city has entered into, okay? So, when you're looking at this, if we look at the spreadsheet, you can see off to the left-hand side, I have my 100% valuation there, and then I have what's called the gross limit. That's 5% of your valuation. In that third column, you'll see that I have the effective debt limit. So, does everybody see that the gross debt that the city could legally issue is 61 million? However, the effective limit is down to 36 million? That's that 60% that is the city's policy. We then go ahead and build in all of the general obligation debt that's still outstanding. So, currently, as of FY13, the city has approximately $14.2 million still outstanding on all the debt that they have already issued. You can see here that now I've built in the proposed 2012, as well as the 2014 bond issue. In addition to geo-debt, the debt capacity, when you're calculating your debt capacity, you also have to include urban renewal revenue bonds, okay? And the reason...primarily, revenue bonds do not count against your geo-capacity, but there isn't clear law as to whether or not urban renewal revenue bonds need to count against it. So, the two prominent attorneys that work with cities and local governments in the state of Iowa, both feel that since there's not clear concise law stating this, we need to take the conservative approach, and we need to count that against our geo-capacity as well. So, you can see there that you currently have about $1.1 million of urban renewal revenue bonds outstanding. And then we get to rebate agreements. And does everybody see that $12.1 million of rebate agreements? On that line item, the thing to consider is if the city enters into a million-dollar rebate agreement in order to get, you know, a company to move to town and build a plant here, what have you, you might enter into a million-dollar agreement. But if that's based off of what they build, you know, or how much their valuation is, it's likely in a lot of cases that the city may not end up paying out that whole million dollars of a rebate. Maybe they'll only pay out 700, or, you know, it's going to be contingent on how much valuation that reads, or what your rebate agreement actually reads. Unfortunately, for the...for when you're calculating your geo-capacity, all of that million actually does count against your capacity, even if you only end up actually paying out 700,000. And that's because when the city signs a rebate agreement, you're stating that we will set aside capacity up to a million, okay? So, unfortunately, you have to count all of that here, even if you don't end up spending it. So, that's one of the reasons communities also look at having an effective limit a little bit higher, because you can see that that $12.1 million does cut into your capacity there. One other thing that regarding the rebate agreements that the council may consider is with future rebate agreements, doing what we call annual appropriation. And I'm not going to get into this a lot here tonight and into all the details, but what that essentially entails is there's certain language written in the rebate agreements, and whoever writes your rebate agreements can help you do this, as well as the bond attorneys, but they put language in there that gives the city the authority to every year vote whether or not they're going to pay that, and that's called an annual appropriation, okay? And if there's annual appropriation in your rebate agreements, then you only have to include that year's payment. So, let's say it's a million-dollar rebate agreement, and you're going to pay 100,000 in one year, only 100,000 is going to count towards your geo-capacity versus the whole million, all right? Now, none of the city's rebate agreements are currently written that way, but that's something that you guys could consider in the future, if, you know, that's something that works for both parties. But you can see here that if you look all the way over to the right then, you guys are actually right now with your geo-debt, your urban renewal debt, as well as your rebate agreements, you guys are at 52% of your legal limit, all right? So, you guys do still have a significant amount of capacity out there. But this is the first test. You know, if you guys are to come to PFM and say, hey, we need to sell whatever the amount, $4.4 million in geo-debt, the first test is we're going to come to the geo-capacity and make sure you have the legal authority to do so. And in your guys' case, you're at a very low level. So, I just kind of want to explain how that all works and what all goes against your geo-capacity. Is there any questions on that? Greg or Nancy, do you guys have anything to add to the debt service fund or geo-capacity side of it before I move on?
We'll likely be recommending a change in policy to the City Council for your consideration as it relates back to TIF. We can certainly consider annual appropriation language, you know, going forward in our agreements. Whether or not we're successful in doing that or negotiating that, I guess, would be the question. And let's see. No, I think that's about all for now.
And I guess the one thing that I didn't mention is the timing that we were looking at for the proposed geo-bonds will be probably to issue those in May sometime to close by the end of the fiscal year. Is that correct? Okay. So, that's kind of the timeframe on those...on that geo-bond issue. That's preliminary at this point, but what we're proposing.
I have a question on that.
Okay.
You were talking about voting this annually. If we had an agreement and two years into a 15-year agreement, the council decided not to do it, is that language...is there something in the agreement that would...I mean, I can see a drawback.
That's the issue. That's the issue. Yeah, that's the issue, and Jenny was indicating that several communities are incorporating that language to date. However, I don't believe that language...last time I talked to John, that that language has been tested in the courts to date.
Yes, I don't...that, yeah. I can't say that it's been tested in the courts and...
So, that's where the issue is. So, if we were not, or the council was not to appropriate funding that year, I would imagine we would be in court defending that, but there is no settled case law in that. Last time I talked to John Danos.
And the other thing to keep in mind with that is, of all the clients that I work with that have annual appropriation, they have...I mean, there is no part of the council when they make that decision, none of them feel like, hey, we're not going to pay this. It's just a way where they don't have to include it in their geo-capacity by putting that language in there. I mean, you know, there's...not to say that they may not in the future, but pretty much what it is, it's a way for them to not use up their geo-capacity in case they would need it for an emergency, or they would need it for a large bond issue and what have you, but I've never seen a council not then approve the payment.
But you're right, it could happen.
Yes, it absolutely could happen.
And that's the issue. It hasn't been tested to date, and...oh, there's one other issue. We had a question?
Well, I just have a comment here. It's not a matter of paying it or not. I'm sure we're going to pay it here, but the question is, what's the best way to pay it, you know? Is the TIF, and if it's not broke, why fix it right now? I mean, what are you trying to accomplish here by changing the TIF structure onto this?
The only thing it affects is our capacity. The law used to state...the law was, I guess, previously interpreted or written to allow cities to only count the annual appropriation. We only, you know, not have to count the entire contract amount. The law changed. We are now required to include the entire amount of the TIF agreement. This is just one way for us to, you know, to address that issue and do that by annually appropriating. We can also just raise our threshold from 60 to 70%.
I was going to say, that's the alternative. If I'm a developer, why would I sign an agreement like that?
That's...
Because we don't...
And the alternative is to increase our effective debt limit.
Right.
If need necessary.
I mean, we can certainly try and negotiate it, and if we're successful in negotiating, include it. If we're not, I know, we just go the current route that we've been taking.
Your 2012, 13 percentage of legal debt limit is 52.41%.
Yep.
And we could go up to 60%. How many dollars does that 7% reflect?
It is...the 70%, what...how you need to calculate that is the city...the 70% is So, you can see the effective limit is 36. Do you see that number? 36.6. 70% would be 42.7. So, that's actually would give this city about $6.1 million of additional capacity.
Thank you.
Yep.
And the other opportunity we could do, we currently sell revenue-abated debt as geo-debt, all of it. And we could section out revenue-abated debt and probably end up getting...doing the same thing.
You absolutely could. You could sell revenue debt. Now, keep in mind, when you're going out to the market, selling geo-debt is going to be the cheapest way to borrow money. It's going to be the lower rate. You don't have to set aside a debt service reserve fund. You don't have to meet coverage, but that's absolutely right. And you know, in your case, you know, you're only at 52%. I have some cities that are at 70 or 80%. So, for them, that annual appropriation language is very important because it could mean they don't have much capacity, if any, if there should be emergency, you know? And I don't think you guys are there. It's just something we want to have those conversations with you guys so that you, you know, could understand all what had to go into this, and in the future, we can discuss further. So...but yes, some cities are very limited on their geo-capacity. As a matter of fact, they come to me and say, Jenny, how much can we sell in bonds this year and still be within our capacity? So...
And the model you're presenting here, it's based on an increase in taxes by 5.2 cents per thousand?
The tax...
No, it's based on a 2% annual increase in assessment.
Yep.
Assess valuation.
Yes. And you can see that if you go to Exhibit One, up in the upper right-hand corner, it tells the tax rate impact.
It shows a 5-cent increase in this portion of the total tax rate.
Yes. Yep. Yep. Any other questions on this part of it?
No.
No? All right. Well, then, we will go ahead, and if you guys want to turn to Tab Two, this is where we're going to start talking about your sewer enterprise fund. And this model here is pretty detailed, and essentially, what it does is, as you guys are very aware, we...in your sewer fund, there's a lot of different individual funds that on the audit are all combined together to be considered your sewer enterprise fund. So, Exhibit One here, which is two pages, is actually the combined summary of all of the different sewer funds, okay? And before I talk much about the combined cash flow, I would like us all to turn to Exhibit Two, and I'm going to talk through these cash flows on an individual basis. So, Exhibit Two is the Water Pollution Control Operations Fund, and I'll call this the WPC Fund. So, essentially, what I've done is we've built individual cash flows for all of these different funds. And when we're looking at our, you know, our cash flows, if you will, essentially, what we do is we like to look back historical, and in this case, you can see that we have historical data for FY08 through FY11, and then you'll see the dotted line going down the middle. We've built in the FY12 reestimates, so we've looked at where were we at for the original FY12 budget, where are we at year-to-date? And then we've also built in a preliminary budget for FY13, and these obviously is not an approved amount yet. It was just a preliminary amount that I believe you had gotten from all the departments, okay?
And just to be clear, that preliminary amount is high?
Yes.
Because that is...that's basically the requested amounts. It includes all of their capital items that they requested, so that number will come down.
Yep. Yeah, and that's a great point, and I was going to talk about that, too, and we hope that we're even on the FY12 estimates being conservative. One thing, and I'll just mention it now, one thing is, as we were looking through this cash flow and we were building it, we found that the city does budget conservatively, and we have found that the actuals, once we really put the actuals in, in most cases, for most expenses, they've come in less than budget. So, that's one thing to keep in mind when we're looking at this cash flow. In addition, the other assumptions here up in the upper left-hand corner, you can see that we have assumed zero growth for consumption or waste volume. We've assumed operating expenses will grow at 3% in FY14 and each year thereafter. And we've assumed an investment interest rate of about 20 basis points, all right? Off to the right-hand side, we have what we call revenue adjustments. And what we've done here is we've assumed 4% that the revenue will grow by 4% every year, and that's historically...you guys historically have increased your rates about 4% or right around there every year. We've assumed that will continue in the future. In looking at this, I'd like you to look at Line Four, and I'd like you to take a look at...when you look at that from '08 through FY12, you can see that in some years, the waste volume or the consumption has actually decreased in some years and then remained pretty stable thereafter, which is why we're not showing any growth. You know, if we were seeing a lot of growth in that, we could...we would continue to show that in future years, but since we've seen that pretty stable, we decided to be conservative and not show any growth there. And then as you're going down, Line Six through 21 is a very detailed approach of what makes up the operating revenues in the WPC Fund. And you can see that year by year, you know, in the different categories, how things have changed, and so we like it to flow. We want you guys to be able to see historical data so you can see then how that relates to FY12 and 13 and going forward. And then Line 23 through 26 is actually the operating expenses. And you can see that we've broken that down into four different expenditures...expenditure items. And one thing that you might note is FY12, when you're looking at the expenditures, there is growth, as well as in FY13, but once again, historically, what we've seen is when actuals actually come in, they are much lower than... But once again, historically, what we've seen is when actuals actually come in, they are much lower than the budgets. And then we get to Line 28, which is net operating revenues. And this is the line that essentially says, after the WPC has paid for all of the operating expenses, that's what's left over to pay for capital outlays that we may have, any transfers to the general fund, any transfers, you know, for, to put into reserve funds, as well as money that's set aside that needs to be paid for the debt. Essentially, the WPC generates the revenues that are used to pay your 2008 SRF debt. And so you'll see that if you turn to Page 2 of 2. You'll see that Line 29, we've included some capital outlays from your budget. And then if you look at the transfers out, you can see administrative on Line 35. That's the transfer that we're transferring to the general fund every year. Line 36, I'm gonna come back to. So let's just move on, and then I'm gonna come back to 36 because that's all part of the whole West Hill Sewer project that we're gonna talk about in greater detail. Line 37, that's the money that's going into the sinking fund to pay for your '08 debt. And then also, the WPC is setting aside money every year to put in a plant replacement reserve fund. And you can see that we're showing here that we're gonna transfer $200,000 out every single year for that. If we go back to Line 36, essentially what we've done is, in order for us to not have to borrow from the SRF early on in this project, what we're doing is we're setting aside money out of both the WPC Fund as well as the CND Fund, okay? And for right now, and these are all a preliminary, it's just, it's one thing that we could do if this is approved. But if we set aside roughly $200,000 a year out of each of these funds, so $400,000, into a reserve fund, we'll be able to build up some cash to help pay for the West Hill Sewer when that time comes and not have to borrow for it as early on. And when I go to talk about Tab 3, I'm gonna explain to you how that's all flowing through. I would like to point out on Line 42, though, here, 42 is our surplus and our deficit. You can see historically that there's been surpluses in the WPC Fund, except for '09. And then going forward, you can see after we make these transfers and the conservative numbers that we have in there for budget, we are having some deficits in these years. But I do wanna make sure that, you know, I mentioned that we are being conservative. And you can see that that amount is going down every year, often to the future. So you can see where those 4 percents are coming in. If we're finding that, you know, the expenditures are coming in where we budgeted or higher, obviously, that's gonna mean we need to do different things. Either we can't transfer as much out, or we'll have to look at that 4 percent and see if that's sufficient. If you look at Line 45, that's the ending fund balance. And you can see that over time, that ending fund balance, because of those deficits, we are decreasing that over time. And then also, one thing to consider in this analysis is we are assuming that the solid waste fund will be paying back the sewer at $400,000 a year, okay? And you can see where that advances to other fund, Line 46 is decreasing over time. Now, if you turn to Exhibit 3, this is actually the same exact layout, only now, this is all the information related to the collection and drainage fund, or what I've been calling the CND Fund. And the CND Fund, I would say, is in financially better shape compared to the revenues versus the expenditures. And you can see, if you actually go to Page 2 of 2, you can see that Line 49, that's the surplus deficit line. You can see here that the surpluses have been pretty substantial historically. There's a few slight deficits for three years, and then we start having a positive balance in this fund again. And Line 33, that's, once again, that's the $200,000 for the West Hill Sewer project that we're setting aside, okay? If you look at Exhibit 4, Exhibit 4 is your Water Pollution Control Replacement Reserve. So remember earlier, out of the WPC, I said that we were setting aside $200,000? So that's where this comes into. All right? There's not much detail, there's not much going on in this fund, so I don't know that we need to talk about it. But we are assuming $270,000 of capital outlays in this fund. Exhibit 5 is the Sewer Extension Improvement Reserve. And I believe that there is a possible project, we have to be determined in this one, but I believe there's a possible project that could come up to be payable out of this, correct? Okay? And then Exhibit 6 is just the sinking fund, all right? Which the sinking fund is a wash, money goes in there to pay for that debt, and then it comes out. And that's for the 2008 SRF, right? So then if you go all the way back to Exhibit 1, essentially, all Exhibit 1 does is it compiles all of those different cash flows into one, and then these are the numbers that actually tie out to your audit, okay? If you look at Page 2 of 2 on this, Line 21 and 22, this is where we're showing that local option sales tax is being used to pay for projects. And for right now, we're just showing whatever the local option sales tax that's coming in, it's the same exact amount of projects. So for in the future, that's a wash. But other than that, that is the only line item in this cash flow that is not, that does not just add up, or is not just a summary of all the cash flows that we just went through, all right? So now, that being said, I know that this is a lot of numbers, and I want you to ask me questions. But let's go to Tab 3 before we go over the questions because Tab 3 is actually gonna pull all of this into play and really show you how we've been trying to work on this project that's gonna come up, okay? So what Tab 3 is, is it's actually what I call Local Option Sales Tax Fund spreadsheet. This is a spreadsheet that Nancy actually put together, and then we worked with her to have it flow with what's going on in the sewer cash flow. And there's a lot of assumptions that are being made in this local option sales tax spreadsheet. If you look up in the upper left-hand corner, I want to make sure that we cover these assumptions. First of all, we're including Stanley's 10-year phase scenario, assuming 3 percent annual escalation in the costs. And we're also assuming that the, that we get the four-year extension on that, okay? We are assuming that this is based on fiscal year versus calendar year. And that's just so it flows just like your audit would. We're assuming that engineer, engineering is added in for Phase 1 only. There are contingency numbers on the project cost for future years, so we're assuming that those contingency numbers will offset the engineering. We are assuming that there will be a 1 and 1/2 annual increase in the local option sales tax revenues. Local option sales tax currently expires on June 30th of 2019. And we're assuming that when that goes back out to vote, that that's gonna be extended or approved by the taxpayers. Obviously, that's the biggest factor that I want to point out here. Is if that doesn't get extended, then we'll have to figure out other ways how we're gonna pay for this. So that's why I want to go over these assumptions. And then the sixth one there talks about that we are bringing money in from both the WPC account, as well as the collection and drainage sewer funds, in order to help fund this. And that we are assuming 4 percent increases in the WPC Fund, as well as the CND Fund every year, annual increases. So what we have here is, if you're just looking at this, in this case, it's set up a little bit differently than the spreadsheets that I've just shown you. But essentially, we have our revenues up top, and that's Lines 2 through 5. Line 6 is our total revenues. So you can see over time how the total revenues flow in. Then we're listing out our expenditures. And that's where those expenditures are actually the project costs. And pretty much, in this case, that's all we're showing is the project costs. And then we get down to our ending balance. And then completely separate from this cash flow, down at the bottom, where it says Proposed Funding Set Aside, all this is, is this is a tabulation of the money that's coming in from the sewer funds. So you can see that $400,000 that's coming in every year. See how that balance is growing, okay? Essentially, what we're looking at is, that's gonna be its own separate fund. We're gonna put money in there every single year until we need it. So until the project costs are higher than what we're bringing in for local option sales tax, we're gonna set this aside. We're not gonna be spending it, we're not gonna be drawing on it. And if you look at, if you look at Line 14 and you go to FY '18, do you see that highlighted in yellow, it's a $1,00602? Does everybody see that? Essentially, in that year, on Line 3, we're bringing in money. We're bringing in $1,560,000 out of this reserve fund that we have now set up, which would be a new fund, in order to break even there, okay? So you can see there that the project costs were about $4.6 million, and we were only bringing in about $3 million, okay? So that's where now we've used some of the sewer money. And if you look down on Line 19, you can see that that balance went from $2.4 million down to $1,240, all right? If you flip the page then, and we keep going on here for years, in FY '19, there's another very large amount of money that we need, approximately $5 million. And this would be for Phase 2 and Phase 3. And that's where in FY '19 is where we're assuming, based off all of the assumptions, which will probably change because it's so far out, that's where now I'm showing is gonna be the first year that we're actually gonna have to borrow from the SRF, okay? So we're getting through with cash on hand from now until FY '19, based off our assumptions. And at that point in time, we'll have to borrow approximately, based off our scenario here, about $4.8 million, all right? And then as we move forward, you can see, starting in FY '22, we're starting to have to draw out of that sewer fund almost every single year until the end of what this spreadsheet is showing at 2028. So by 2027, we've drawn everything out of that, the $400,000 that we're setting aside. Now, keep in mind that this, I mean, this project is so far out. If expenses should come in higher on the project or what have you, we maybe will have to borrow a year earlier. But this is something, now that this is built, and now that we can monitor this, we're gonna have a good idea, you know, much sooner than waiting until 2019 and then say, oh, wait, we don't have enough money to finish this project, now what do we do? So I think, you know, I think Nancy and Greg have a great approach here of projecting out where we think things would be. And it's gonna be a lot easier to update these numbers, even if it changes things a year or two, at least there's a plan out there of how to do this. So, you know, that being said, when you look at both the loss spreadsheet and the sewer, you know, what do you guys have for questions? I know it's a lot of numbers, and I look at these cash flows every day, I know you guys don't, so I definitely expect questions.
This gives us a good argument to add additional four years to the consent agreement.
Yeah.
What are the consequences if we don't get the four-year extension?
Borrow earlier.
Borrow earlier.
Yeah.
Yep.
Counsel? Comments, Mark? Additional, Phil?
Nothing additional.
Well, if we go to Exhibit 3 here, I know there is a lot of numbers here. If you go Page 2 of 2, and on the Line 49, the surplus and deficit, what causing the fund to be in deficit for FY '12, '13, and '14?
Well, it's gonna be a lot of different things. If you look at, the revenues are about $1.1 million. You have, the CND expenses are about $389,000. And then you can see that you're transferring out for capital outlays, about $9,000. But I would say the big factor is that Line 37, which is your transfers out. Out of this fund, you're transferring out about, including that $200,000 that is a preliminary idea that we're just bringing forward to you now, we're transferring out about $467,000. So, you know, if there's a deficit here, obviously, one thing that you could do is not transfer as much money out and make those transfers smaller. And I think essentially what we were looking at here is, if you look at your total fund balance, the cash is there, there's still a pretty significant amount of cash at the end of FY '12, or a fund balance, I should say, of about $727,000 in that fund, even though we're drawing it down a little bit. So how we were looking at that is, you know, even though we're taking $200,000 out and setting it aside for this project, there's still significant, enough cash in here to pay all of your bills and not put this fund into a negative situation. But if you wanted to have a surplus there, expenses would need to come in less, which that is very likely, based off what we've seen historically, or transfer less money out of this account.
For example, we could take more out of CND and less out of sewer.
Yes.
We could change the percent, you know, 300 out of CND and 100 out of sewer.
As long as we don't do what we do with our vehicle account that is supposed to have, should have, a set amount, 100,000, 200,000 a year annually put into it. And that's a pot we keep playing with every year. So if we start playing with the little pots of money, then we're not gonna make it.
Bob, comments?
Nothing.
Jeanette?
Nothing.
Tom?
The WPC Fund, Line 53, internal loan repayment, where's that coming from? Which fund is that coming out of? It's $400,000 a year.
What that is, is if you look at Line 46, that's a solid waste fund. And it's my understanding that the solid waste fund is planning to pay back the sewer, the WPC Fund at about $400,000 a year, and so that's gonna increase the cash position.
And one other quick question, I'm new here. Page 1 of 2 in the same fund, what is analytical income?
That's a great question. I had that same question for Nancy.
Do you know what that is?
Oh, yeah, it's lab.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, counsel? Very good. Jenny, thank you for your expertise.
Yeah, and I really do just wanna, I really wanna thank you guys for allowing PFM to work with the city. I look forward to this relationship. And I really wanna thank Greg and Nancy for helping us do this. It looks nice here and all the nice little bound copy, but it was a lot of work. And if it wouldn't have been for these guys, we couldn't have got that done. So I just really wanna thank you guys so much for all your help on this, so.
Thank you. We hope you're not traveling tonight.
I am. I have a meeting at 9:00 in the morning at Waquis, so. All right, well, thanks so much, you guys.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Well, at this time, Greg and I are requesting to enter into a closed session discussion pending, regarding pending litigation. Is there a motion to go into a closed session?
So, second.
Osama? And Tom? This is a roll call. Osama?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
6-0, okay, thank you very much. Motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting?
No, there's no motion to adjourn.
No, there's no motion to adjourn.